Okay, good morning, everybody. We're going to call the March TCTV Commission meeting to order. Let's see, first on our agenda is public comment. Richie, you're technically, oh, where'd it go? There you are. You're technically public if you have any comments. This would be the time to make them.
No, I don't have no comment.
Okay, all right, then. Next up is approval of our January minutes, which I sent out with the meeting notice. Any corrections or comments on that? First, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Vince.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jens. Any other comments, corrections?
No.
Okay, then, all those in favor of approving the January minutes say aye.
Aye.
And Amy, you're on. There you are. Hello.
Hello.
All right, great. Um. Next up is commission members. Vince, I know you talked to Ed, right?
Yes, I talked to Ed. He was very interested. I sent him the form that he needs to fill out. Last I spoke to him a week or two ago about it, he said he hadn't filled it out yet. He's been very busy, but I think the interest is there as a matter of getting to it.
Okay, yeah, because I checked with Alicia at Town Hall and she said she hadn't received anything yet, so hopefully.
Okay, I may see him tomorrow morning. I'll remind him.
Okay, great. All right, any other? That would bring us up to five, so. Unless Ed bows out, we'll be back up to our full strength again. And if he does, then we'll still be looking for any other suggestions anyone has. Okay, on to finance, our 2022-23 budget status. We continue to be on track. No unexpected expenditures, and we're running a little bit below expectations at this point. On the 2023-24 budget, the first selectmen's budget has come out, and the only change that looks like they made from what we asked for was to reduce our capital request from $10,600. I asked if we could replace four of our 10-year-old cameras, and they cut that in half. So it was $10,600, and they cut it back to $5,300. But I think, Laura, I think that'll be okay if we replace two this year and two next year, right?
I think we'll be okay with that, yeah.
Okay, um. Capital outlay. And our hearing for the Board of Finance in front of the Board of Finance is next Wednesday, the 15th, at 4 o'clock on Zoom, and we are the last people. They're gonna do the Board of Ed, oh, I guess tomorrow, or tonight, that's what you said, right, Bill? And then we are literally, it starts at 8:30 a.m., and we are the last ones at 4 o'clock, so it's going to be a long day. And then I guess it's the following week that they do everybody else. So if anybody wants to get on, Bill, will the link be available?
I believe the links are all on the website now. I haven't checked.
Okay, so if any of you are interested in joining, please do, Laura, if you can be available, that would be great.
I'll make sure I'm available.
Okay. All right, next up is programming. So I'm sorry, my voice is shot today, and I don't know why, so sorry if I'm brassy. Okay, Laura, so what do we got?
Programming, well, Adult Education Program is starting to pick up now. I guess with COVID, the library is starting to get back in full swing with more programs, as well as the senior center's been doing some stuff, so we've been covering that. As we mentioned at the last meeting, we've covered a whole bunch of winter sports, and we've got a lot of interest in covering the spring sports and the spring concerts. We now have three student videographers, so another student videographer has joined on, which is great. So hopefully, you know, we'll have coverage for as many things, you know, as many of the things as we have been. But again, it's going to be sports-heavy, but hopefully we can get some more adult education stuff as well. I worked with TPOD and the Police Department to create some, a training video to provide resources for patrol officers when working with transgender and non-binary members of the community. Just some information to help them understand and process. Excuse me. And then it's allergy time, I think. And then I worked-
So is the training videos for the Police Department, are they going to be on the channel, or are they just for the Police Department to use?
Right now, they're just for the Police Department. I want to follow up with them, because there's a message from Chief Lombardo that precludes it, that addresses the officers, but the content still could be, you know, relevant to the general public, even though it's, you know, it's, we had Candace Penthony from the Triangle Center in Norwalk, and she spoke with Officer Bartosik and another officer, I can't remember her name, Samantha, and I don't remember her last name, but just as, it was set up as a conversation in the studio, which really could be put on the station. The Police Department just needed to use that first internally. So I'll follow up with Chief Lombardo.
Okay.
You can.
Okay, and then you were on to-
The Health Department came in. We didn't do anything with radon, but it was Heart Health Month, and they're in, they came in, Suja Cozy, one of the nurses, and their intern came in, and we made a couple PSAs for Heart Health Month, and those went up on their website, and then we have access to those for future PSAs as well.
Nice.
Yeah, and then I mentioned the videographers, and I heard from Todd Manuel about THS graduation. We haven't started any planning, but it was more just, hey, you guys still on board? So that's gonna, that'll be here before we know it, because it's already March.
Yeah, but I'm glad they're getting you involved so early.
Yeah, and Todd is great about that.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
All right, so let's move on to technical. We've got the Board of Ed video distribution system.
It's, I think, the brand is V-Mix, so I'm not sure if they're referring to it as the V-Mix or the Video Delivery System.
How do you spell V-Mix?
I think it's the letter V-dash-mix.
V-Mix, okay.
And that's been installed, and Michelle Merina was trained, and Dennis and I attended those training sessions. It's very similar, you know, the use of it is pretty similar, but the thing that's really neat is that for each camera, you can program specific shots. So for instance, you know, Michelle can program a shot where, when it's time for the superintendent's report, she can bring up a pre-programmed, you know, set point where the camera immediately zooms and locks in on Dr. Semel, and then she can cut to that camera. So it saves a lot of, you know, the time of manipulating the cameras, panning and zooming.
As long as he sits in the same seat every time?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. But, you know, again, you can still, she can still tweak it, and, you know, it's got some pretty neat, you know, it's got a lot of lower thirds that are already there, some graphics. So that's really cool. We're going to test streaming the feed from the Long Hill Room to the YouTube channel this afternoon.
Excuse me, Laura, did we get this from DNR?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
We're going to test streaming the channel from where?
From the Long Hill Room to the TCTV YouTube channel this afternoon. It's already, the Zoom, it will be live streaming to Facebook via Zoom. That's my understanding. Surprise, Bill. And then, yeah, and then when the Board of Ed meetings go live, we're going to, the plan is to stream them to both Facebook and to YouTube.
Yes. We've achieved liftoff.
Yes, finally. And then Bill and I met last week with DNR in council chambers to go over installing, hopefully, the same setup in council chambers, as well as some other rooms.
So I have a comment. This is the technical portion, right?
Yep.
Then, so I suggested V-Mix two years ago, and DNR rejected it, hands down.
Yeah, I think, I don't know why, but-
Maybe because they weren't selling it, but-
Possibly. My understanding, and I could be wrong, is that they were moving away from the peg space and into signage, but then with the pandemic, I think they kind of, you know, re- refocused.
Well, the situation was that they recommended Tricaster over V-Mix, because V-Mix just wasn't stable, so-
I guess V-Mix is stabilized, and now Tricaster-
I'll give Donna a quick call. I'm sure it works. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, they've moved away from Tricaster because it's proprietary. And especially the issue, you know, the issue is, is that the machines that we have, it run, you know, they, it runs, you know, it ran on IE, which is, you know.
It was a very old system. I do, yeah.
And like I said, it's-
It's still under the base, by the sound of it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll talk to Donna, and don't get me wrong, I'm just, I'm just trying to get the sequence in order.
Right, okay. And then also, in terms of, in terms of technical, we have ordered, so we did order some new equipment. We, again, a lot of our cameras, I noticed, are either, I think it was, some were from, what did I say, Kate, like, six and 10 years old?
10, yeah.
Yeah, there were 10 years, and the 10-year-old cameras are beasts. They weigh a ton, they're heavy. So the two that we replaced, literally, about this big, and they're super light. So in terms, we've replaced two of the field cameras, and those big, heavy, clunky ones are going to replace two of the studio cameras. Because I don't even know how old those are. And then we ordered a bunch of accessories to go with them. We ordered hoods for the LCD screens, which will be great for graduation. We ordered some adapters to use the external monitors that we purchased, which will be great for, you know, anything, those of us who have to wear reading glasses to adjust, you know, to see the bubble on a tripod, will appreciate being able to see the shot through a monitor instead of a little teeny-tiny one. We got extra batteries and chargers for the new cameras and rain covers, and then we got HDMI-to SDI converters, which we will use in the studio. So that's where we are on the equipment, which is very exciting, because now all the cameras are much lighter.
It sounds good. I'm looking forward to seeing the results.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
There's one thing, which I haven't done, and that was to forward information about these microwave transmitters for graduation, where we would have one of these devices, they're the size, well, maybe like a deck of playing cards or something like that. So you'd have one in a window in the school, connected to the wired Ethernet connection, and it would be microwaving out to a receiver somewhere on the field or wherever. And then you would just use Wi-Fi going into that. So you'd create your own Wi-Fi area without relying on the Wi-Fi area, the Wi-Fi in the school. So I'm going to remind myself to send that out, because it's a really cheap, effective way to do this.
Okay, and that would be helpful for, for instance, for, that was, and that came up, if I remember right, on the tail end of the St. Joe's football game, because their cell service in that location is really bad, otherwise.
It's very external event, really, within sight of a wired network, which both St. Joe's and Trumbull High would be.
Right. Right, well, we do have the hotspot that, for, you know, a wireless hotspot.
Yeah, the hotspot uses, you know, AT&amp;T or Frontier. I've tried to stream from an event with, you know, several hundreds, thousands of people, and the wireless service is, it just breaks down.
Yeah, like graduation did last year. There were a lot of issues.
Okay, right, so I'll get some information out, and it's really simple and very effective.
So let's make sure we do this, because we really need our own, I think,
Yeah.
Yeah.
way to make sure the signal gets out.
I can take a hint, Kate. I'll do it this time.
And then my last-
Got a big star next to your name, Jens, so yes. I'm sorry, Laura.
No, that's okay. The last thing is that one of our backup hard drives failed. So it, I don't, you know, again, it went corrupt, so I'm wondering if it's time to revisit the cloud system, because again, I did a little bit of Googling, and I don't know how long those hard drives are intended to last. I don't know, Bill, if you have any, they're just G-drive, like, you know, anywhere from 4 to 20 terabyte, which is, I mean, we've got duplicates of every, all the programming that we've done, like, there's a backup, but still, you know, if one fails, and if, or whatever, in 10 years from now, who's to say that any of them are going to A, work, or B, be compatible with whatever we're using?
So what's the, do you have the numbers for cloud?
I'll have to pull those down again, because it's just a matter of, because the issue is, the issue is how far back do we want to hold things, and I don't know how long we are required to as far as government.
We're not the official record on government, so just-
Okay. Okay, and then the other thing is, how long do we want to keep things? How much of an archive do we want to make? Because we've got things, we've got digital copies of program, and that goes back to 2013.
How much, how much data is it in terms of terabytes, do you know?
Um, I am on my, I don't know how big the other drives are, it's the smaller drives, maybe four, maybe 20 tops.
Okay.
It's just a, I guess, I could verify that.
Do we already have a cloud solution in mind?
No, that's, if you recall, Jens, that's the one that we discussed. We discussed using Amazon Glacier, and the issue was a recurring charge on the town's credit card was how it was purchased, or how it was paid for.
Right, they charge, it's 99 cents per terabyte per month, so the expense would be really, really small.
For that, but I seem to remember some other charges involved. I'd have to find, I have a spreadsheet that worked that out.
It's only, they only charge you when you, if you want to restore an archive.
Right.
Ingestion is free.
Right.
So Laura, can you pull together, maybe with Jens in consultation, you know, what our costs would be, so that at the next meeting, we can review it and make a decision, and then I can figure out how I'm going to pull the funds, I'm going to have to move something around from another budget to do it, both this year and next year, because it, you know, it's too late for me to get it in now, but I'm pretty sure we'll have a little room, depending about how much money we're talking about, but-
And I think we're okay between now and June. You know, I don't think we need to, if we want to wait till the next fiscal year, I don't know that we need to, you know, move-
Well, I don't know, like, I didn't plan for it in the budget, so I think we need to figure it out, so that we, so I'm confident that we can start it now, or that I can pull it out of somewhere else for next year, and then plan for it in the following fiscal year.
Okay. I can do that.
I would estimate it, based, I have 17 terabyte in Amazon Glacier, and it literally costs me $16.50 per month. That there is no, I mean, I have to write a script or some kind of batch file in Windows or whatever to upload it automatically. And, but, you know, there is no cost as such, as long as you leave a credit card, create an account in AWS, and you leave a credit card. And that's, you know, I would say less than 20 bucks a month.
Well, there's got to be some way that, I mean, the town has to have other situations like that, so we'll just have, yes, Bill.
Bill nodding his head.
Yeah, so, I mean-
Petty cash.
Seriously, yeah, so let's, let's just get our, you know, dot budget, you know, ducks in a row, and then we can go back to purchasing and figure out how we make it happen.
Okay.
Okay. Info for next month. And Laura, as long as you and Jens are aligned, if you get that to me sooner, you know, I can go ahead and talk to Dan, or if I have to go to Maria, whatever, to figure it out.
Okay, I have a spreadsheet already worked out. I just have to pull that and make sure that the costs are the same, that nothing's changed.
And have Jens look at it to see if it's comparable to what he's experiencing. Jeff, is that you in a haze of gray smoke or fog or something?
It's from the-
Don't say it. Don't say it. Don't put it out there. Don't you dare say that. Now he took his, now he took his mic off, all right.
Good morning, guys. Sorry I'm late.
Hi, Jeff.
Weather. We've got a big Board of Finance meeting tonight, so I'm trying to get prepared.
Um, so I think we just, we were just talking about the Board of Ed video distribution system, which now we think we're calling ViMix or V-Mix?
ViMix, that's the software, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Michelle's been trained, and Laura and Dennis were there too.
Yeah.
Today, Laura said she's testing the feed from Long Hill to our head end, so make sure we can get on YouTube and Facebook, yes?
Yeah, and Laura sent all the keys over, the codes, so thank you for that.
Sure, I just have to push the button that says, that says start.
Okay.
It's a big lift, but I'm sure you can do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so anything else on the Long Hill front, Jeff?
We had a TV go bad a couple weeks ago already, so they replaced it. We're ready to go. I know there's a, there's a wish list that Michelle had put together with DNR, and Superintendent is not really fond of funding it right now. It's for an extra camera, I believe, a fifth camera.
Right, right.
And some kind of software, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what it does. But, I mean, I, my feeling was, let's get it up, let's use it, let's see what else we need or may not need, but let's just get it up and start using it. I mean, it's long overdue.
Just add that Jeff is here. Okay. Sorry, I'm just getting my notes caught up.
Laura, how big is that drive you need? Because I might have one external for now, but just to get you through.
We have, I have a number of drives. We just bought a, I think it was a 20-terabyte external drive, but the one that failed is about four or six.
Okay, all right, let me look at, let me look into that.
Thank you.
All right. Also, how is your Adobe working with the update on the video card?
So far, so good, knock wood.
Okay.
No issues yet, thank you, as yet, thank you.
All right, good, excellent, okay. Yeah, we know those machines are old.
Yeah, well, they do what they need to do.
Okay.
Okay, so anything else on the technical front? Bill, we're just waiting for that quote to come in.
Yeah, once the quote comes in, we'll have a better idea of what we're dealing with. And he said, when we met with him last week, it would take him two weeks to get the quote, so hopefully next week.
Anytime you want to come overlook the system, Bill, you know, come on over, and Michelle can give you a run-through. Also, the question came up too. I'm still going to continue to pay for the recording out of my budget for the Board of Ed meetings. I did when Pat Curtin was doing, I did when Ralph was doing it, so I will continue that.
Good.
Is that okay?
That would be great.
Okay. All right.
Okay, anything else on the technical front? Okay, then let's move on to marketing and PR. I think we were working on trying to get a social media posting content and schedule. Just look at my notes here. So I have, from the last minutes, that we're still working on that, Laura, is that sound correct?
Amy and I sat down and to go over, you know, the current accounts and to see if we could come up with a path forward. And, you know, we agreed that we'll just continue with the Wednesday, you know, posting the schedule on the social media Wednesday. And then she also recommended that when I do post things, like if, a lot of times if we're going live, I'll mention, hey, we're at the high school, and we're going to livestream this game, to include pictures in it, just because, you know, again, keep it more visual. So I've been doing that where possible, and, you know, now, now that I've taken some pictures, we have some canned photos, so if I need to use a picture of the high school gym, I've got that. And then she also, I believe Amy also suggested, you know, reaching out to the town departments to submit short videos, they can even be made on their phone. You know, if somebody's got similar to the Health Department PR, you know, the Health Department PSAs, so I need to start doing that and feel out a response, and if that's the case, then, you know, we can, whatever, spotlight a different department each month or however. I had been using a free version of HootSuite, but they are dropping the free version the end of March. And the lowest tier of paid plans is $99 a month, which is excessive, given what we're doing. So I-
So what is that used for?
HootSuite will push, I can schedule social media posts, and it will push it to the different pages.
Yep.
But I found a program, I've been just sort of test piloting it, called Buffer, and it's free, and it will push to our Facebook, our Instagram, and our Twitter feed. And I don't know that we need more than that right now.
Yeah, it sounds like pretty good coverage.
Yeah, and that's the most number of channels that we can use without paying. And I, those are, you know, I think those are the big three, and if that works, then that works.
So it was Facebook, Instagram, and?
Twitter.
Twitter.
Yeah. And right now, the only running, you know, like, the planned content is just that schedule every Wednesday, and then again, just, if we get, you know, if we create PSAs, we can share those. And again, maybe, you know, if I'll, I need to reach out to the departments, you know, to the town departments, but if I get a number of feedback, it could be, you know, whatever, if they have, depending on what they want to share, it could be the first and third Monday, or, you know, things like that, but it's going to depend on-
And could we, could we go over and shoot them, or have them come to the studio if they wanted, or are we looking for something more like somebody on their phone walking around saying, oh, this is the purchasing department, say hi?
Yeah, they could do that, or it could even be, you know, like EMS just saying, hey, we've got, whatever, you know, free CPR training, or, you know, Narcan training, or the Health Department can say, we're giving away Narcan kits, or whatever, we're giving away radon kits at the library, or, you know, whoever that-
Yeah.
You know, or the library, we've got this coming up, you know, it doesn't have to be anything-
Fancy.
Yeah, and then the other option for that is short, so even to take the phone conversation to the next level is doing vertical videos, because reels are huge on on Instagram and Facebook right now, and it's a good way of getting your contact out in front of newer people. So if you have, like, a very short, there's a Women's History Month, and the library wants to highlight one woman, and they're just doing a vertical video of, this is so-and-so, she did this, this, and this, and that gets posted up there. That, that in itself, that kind of content could just start making the pages more active, and then also just utilizing that feature will help get the Facebook, Instagram page, as well as YouTube pages out there and active.
Great. Fantastic. Yes, I love it. Okay, so Laura, you'll figure out if and when you move from HootSuite to Buffer, correct?
I've actually been, I've started using Buffer last week, just because I think I might as well get used to it before I have to make the switch. And it's, you know, it's fairly straightforward.
Okay.
I prefer HootSuite, it's super easy, and it's got a nice interface, but I can't justify $100 a month, that's insane.
Okay. All right, anything else on the marketing and PR front? Okay, how about the Trumbull High connection? I think Amy and Todd were trying, Amy, you were trying to meet up with Todd Manuel?
Yeah, I thought we were dropping this from the agenda, but I have not. I assumed I was going to run into him for children events, but I haven't. If somebody doesn't mind just sending up an email between me and him, I can then take it from there. I think that that would be just a good way of more, I guess, formally bringing up- I think that that'd be a, just a good way of more, I guess, formally bringing up the conversation.
Okay, Laura, can you do that connect?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we've been flying through the agenda here this morning. Which sort of brings us to the end, um. As we've covered everything else, are there other things you guys want to talk about or issues we need to discuss?
I'm good.
Um, depending, I mean, I, I'm not going to put up, uh, back to the budget for a minute. I'm not going to put up a giant fight for the two extra cameras that, uh, Vicky cut out of the budget, but if the Board of Finance cuts our budget, I may need, uh, you know, some more ammunition from you guys to try to get the town council to bring it back to Vicky's level. I, I'm, I'm not expecting that's going to happen because it's not very much money, but, um, you know, i- it's tight for everybody, so.
Don't, don't forget that we are saving the town. I think last time we looked at, we, we're saving $5,000 at least by covering the, the video portion of the graduation ourselves. So, you know, it, it's an investment. You know, blah, blah, blah. No, no, seriously, it's, you know, we do return value, not just in, in terms of cultural, but also financial.
Right.
I'm writing this down.
And I.
I, you remember what we paid for video coverage? Last time we had somebody else do it.
I want to say it was about $6,000, does that sound right?
Yeah, that, uh, that, that's what I was thinking, so.
Hey, perfect.
Kate, I think we've already made the argument that, um, you know, we have increased, um, you know, civic participation.
Yep. Well, I mean, I, I'm not expecting this. I just want to give you guys a heads up that if, if that happens and, you know, we'll just need to rally the troops and talk to town council, so. I'm hoping that that's not, not necessary. Uh, okay, so anything else we haven't talked about? Or new things you want to bring up? Um, our next meeting is April 20th. Is that, did we double check that that's not spring break?
No, it's not. Spring break is the week after Easter, so the kids have Good Friday and then that following week off.
Okay, alright, so, um, alright, the next meeting is April 20th. The, we've been, we had talked about trying to do, uh, occasional meetings in the studio. I don't know if you guys want to do that this meeting or wait till the June 1st meeting?
I think it, it works good on, on Zoom to be honest with you. I, I like being in the studio, but the convenience of this is, you know, to be taken into account.
Alright, well, I'm just going to keep asking just to, you know, because we express some interest in being in there once or twice a year, so. But I think that was mostly Jim now that I think back. Um, so, um, I'm fine with Zoom, uh, but Laura, that, you know, if there's, and, and certainly if there's any reason that you want us up there to see something new and exciting, we're, we're happy to do it. Um, and I think the other thing we have, we have to keep in mind is that this is an election year, so.
Yes.
Just start thinking about that, um, because before you know it, we'll be.
Yeah.
Be dealing with all of that, yeah.
Oh, the only, the only other thing I wanted to bring up, Kate, is that when the remix, um, I don't know if we have that set up, but especially for town hall, I really think it's important that we have the ability to, um, to access those files remotely. So like I can doubt, so for instance, like last Thursday was an exception, but there are a lot of Wednesday night meetings and Thursday is typically when probate court's in session. So there have been times where I've gone to town hall, had to go back to the studio and then come back later because probate's in session. So if I could get those meetings remotely, it would be a huge help.
So can you get, is that a functionality we have with the Board of Ed system that we'd be trying to reproduce with the council chamber system?
We used to have it and I'm, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, um, actually, because it's on the same network, it's really easy. It's just a, an FTP, um, up to the server, so that, that's not an issue. Um, I guess we can create an FTP on your side, Bill.
You're on mute, Bill. Uh, he's on another call.
Bill's doing.
He's multitasking.
multitasking, yeah. He's like an octopus with like all the different, like, octopus operator.
And what did you call it in MTN?
FTP File Transfer Protocol.
Uh huh.
Sorry about that, I, uh, had another call, also.
Okay.
Talking about file transfer protocol, um, getting it set up from the Board of Ed, the mix system to, to Trump, the TCTV head end and we're one, we want to make sure we had that same functionality from council chambers, because if Laura has to go up physically to pull the file, you know, she has to deal with whoever, you know, probate or whoever else might be in there.
Um, yeah, if there's a way to do it remotely, we can, we can look into that.
Yeah, FTP Bill probably be the best.
Yep.
Set up a script and.
So as long as you could poke holes in the firewalls, then.
Yeah.
You know, we can get through it.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's just make sure if somebody adds that to their list of things that, you know, at the end of the chamber, council chamber setup that we, we do that.
Okay.
It'll be in my notes.
Remember about that, Bill, what, what the best way is, but yeah, I agree, Jen. Shouldn't be a problem on your side, Bill, because you're not blocking anything going out. Um, but we certainly block enough coming in, so we'll take a look at that.
Okay, and then Jeff, you'll get it, is, is it already set up for Laura out of the Board of Ed system?
I believe so, let me check on that, um. And I'll get back to you today on that, either today or tomorrow, now, Laura.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Okay, let me just, one, two, three, four, six. Okay, I've got Bill, I've got Kate.
I have a dumb question, Laura. Even though we're streaming that, are you saving that at the same time?
Uh, well, you're, when it's streamed, YouTube saves it, saves it, so I can download it from YouTube. But I would rather, you know, you guys, you're recording it on your end, like the remix automatically saves it to that hard drive in that tower and, uh, as well.
So you want the raw, you want the raw before it streams then?
I would prefer, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Questions, comments? Alright, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting at eight 25, that's what I have. Alright, great. Well, thanks everybody for making it. We will see you, uh, April 20th.
Thank you.